Color is just.
Just.
Right by the boat launch.
New building?
The other side.
I have five P M. Sir. Don, you ready?
I'm ready.
Marty?
Yep.
Judge?
Yeah.
Nancy?
Yep.
Okay, here we go. Like call the workshop to order on June sixteenth, twenty twenty at five thirty P M. Kirk Colorado.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Councilmember Bumanto?
Here.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Here.
Councilmember Nichols?
Here.
Councilmember at Large Vandenvoer?
Here, please stand for a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag, United States of America. Into the Republic. One nation. Indivisible. Liberty and justice. Okay, we'll skip over the certification of prior meetings, reading and privilege of the four and privilege of the four communications in the mayor, including disapproval messages. Mayor? Okay, C N N. We'll go to six communications of public and petitions.
Number one. The claim, Rafael Santiago of Tenny's Courtney Street for damages to his car's front passenger from allegedly caused by a pothole on Leopard Street between six and seven feet on May twenty nine, twenty twenty at approximately ten P M.
Any discussion council? See, and none on, I need a motion to refer to the city attorney and Department of Public Works Director Woodbury.
So move.
By Williams?
Nichols.
Second by Nichols. Number two?
Number two, prior written notice from. From Sun Ming Wong of twenty five Armadillo Street notifying the city of a potential threat to help and safety posed by a tree in front of the house of the city right of.
Any discussion council? Need a motion to refer this to the Department of Public Works Director Woodbury?
Well. Second.
First by Stoyl, second by Williams.
Number, number three summons in a civil action from Patty and the Passitary. I'm sorry, Passitary administrate the state of Gregory Lee Galloway.
Any discussion council? Need a motion to refer this to the city attorney?
Well. Second.
Nichols.
First by Stoyl, second by Williams.
Number. Number four, request from Thomas B. Belk to put his Spanish food stand and Charlie's curly fries stands in Memorial Park for the summer of twenty twenty. He's willing to pay a monthly fee to the city for space, rent, and use of electric and water hookup.
Any discussion council?
Yeah, um, I think instead of going in Memorial Park, I think we should try to put them over at the, uh, between the Tim Hortons and the Clarion. There's a hard parking spot back down there and that that probably would be a, a place that would be better suited for them, I believe. Randy, you can let me know if I'm wrong. Isn't there, uh, electrical hookups and stuff like that down there, too?
There is electrical over there. I don't know about water, but it wouldn't be too hard.
All right. And then this would be something that would be, uh, probably fall in line with whatever we were doing. I, I don't know how we'd come up with, uh, what we're gonna charge them or whatever, but then that would go, uh, directly to the city.
City clerk's office.
Yeah, yeah. That wouldn't be a D L D C function.
Anybody else?
I believe Mr. Valk said that he would when was given opportunities of where to go, that would be a wonderful location as well for the move.
Okay.
Great.
Okay, so, uh, I like the idea of, uh, putting a location between Tim Horton and Clarion, maybe some other people will follow up on this. I, I would assume they would be, so I need a motion to refer to appropriate departments as well as approved subject appropriate insurance as usual conditions.
Nickel move.
Stoyl.
First by Nickel, second by Stoyl.
That's what the amendments that we talked about, correct?
Excuse me?
That's what the amendments we talked about, correct? Like change the location? Okay.
Yeah, that's I just stated that. Make sure that we change that out of Memorial Park to between Tim Hortons and Clarion.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Number five, letter from Cynthia Carnes notifying the annual Joe Carnes Memorial softball tournament has been canceled this year due to health and safety concerns related to the COVID nineteen crisis.
You receive and file that?
Number six. Letter from city assessor Thomas, Thomas Maleczko to the council informing them that he turned in his retirement to Mayor Roses on May eighteenth, twenty twenty, and that he will be in his office until June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
But my last official day of employment is July thirtieth.
That'd be July thirtieth, you said, Tom?
Better.
That's of two thousand twenty-two? Twenty, I'm on, I'm on twenty-one.
Uh, there's some little voice there, I mean, no way to help.
Can we, can we keep on, can we keep you for another year?
No.
Tom, that voice inside your head is so loud, I'm hearing it.
Yeah. Remember those two little words, yes, dear.
Tom, remember my recommendations to you today?
You had three or four of them.
Okay, well, I'll, uh, I'll say my little spiel on your last day, but, uh, it's, uh, I'm happy for you, but I'm sad for the city because you do such a great job, Tom. Okay, we're receiving file that? We'll go to number seven.
Number seven, loudspeaker application request from Amanda DeGolier of ninety-nine Ount Street and neighbors to use standard P A and amps in their yards on July second, twenty twenty from seven P M. Till eleven P M. For a private fan.
Any discussion council? I'd like to say I was looking at her application. She did a great job. You know, she contacted all the neighbors and neighbors signed off on it on petition. It's, it's just, it's, that's good to see this way. That, um, it covers her and it covers us. I mean, I just want to make sure that everybody's on board with that. She did a very professional job on it. I, I applaud her for her, her application, so. What do you need a motion to refer her as my usual?
Is, but Paul, is there any way that we could, um, make that standard procedure from now on when they do that to get the request from the neighbors around them?
That is. Councilwoman, if I can interject the Paul real quick, um, it is our standard policy when it's in a residential area that we do have, uh, the neighbors sign on.
And if, if I may interject also, um, their request didn't come in that way. There was a lot of direction by the city clerk to have them, uh, complete that application.
Thank you.
I first it, Paulie.
Who's that?
I make a motion first.
Okay.
Stoyl, second.
Second by who?
Stoyl.
Number eight. Loudspeaker application request from Henry Hooton Senior of two twelve Webster Street to use DVDs and a live band on July third, twenty twenty from seven P M. Till eleven P M. For a retirement birthday party.
Hey.
Is that?
He, uh, he does that every year, every year, the birthday party, but he's actually getting his retirement stuff this year. He has gone in the past to, uh, to get the, uh, neighbors approval and stuff like that, so, um, it, it's something like I said, that happens every year, so I'll be glad to make the first for that one.
I'll second that one.
Yeah, Henry's a, Henry's a great guy and, uh, he's done a lot of, uh, work for a lot of people in the city and he's a, he's a good dude, so congratulate him.
Mister Chairman, may I interrupt a minute?
Sure.
Uh, is there any way our guy running the show here? My television TVs are not, are, are very low. Does, does he have anything to do with it or is that just a TV thing? I was handed a note and.
I, I don't know. I'm coming in loud and clear with everybody. Oh, you're talking about YouTube, Judge?
Yeah, the, the, I, I don't know if it, if it's got anything to do with our connection or whatever, but, uh, I was handed a note from somebody that their TV, it, it, this thing is not coming across loud.
Okay, so maybe Gabe heard that. Okay, moving on to number nine.
Yes, sir. Number nine, loudspeaker application request from Frank Beach to use amps and speakers on July fourth, twenty twenty. Alternate date, July fifth, twenty twenty, from three P M. Till seven P M. For band practice at eleven Lakefront Boulevard.
Any discussion council?
Uh, there was a little bit of discussion that, that we had had with, uh, some calls and conversation last night. I did talk to Frank. Um, I believe that, uh, we talked to the chief also and, and, uh, everything should be good and if, uh, where their location is at ends up causing anything through the, uh, through, through the traffic to have any problems, then, um, then they'd shut that down and he'd fully understand that. That's not his intent. So, uh, as long as the chief's okay with it, I, I would first this one also.
Chief Portolano?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I don't have any issues with it and, uh, my only issue would be, uh, if they're gonna have cars parking that they stay along the lakeside walls just in case emergency vehicle has to get through, but, um, I don't believe there'll be any issue with it. I'm sure Frank will take care of whatever the issues are and make sure it stays safe.
Any discussion council? Need a motion to refer to appropriate departments as well as approved subject to appropriate insurance as usual conditions.
Uh, first?
By William?
Nichols.
Seconded by Nichols. Reports to staying committees, boards, and commissions, Councilman Williams.
Uh, nothing for here. I'll wait till meeting.
Councilman Stoyl.
I don't have anything either.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Marty.
I don't have anything, Paul.
Councilman Stoyl.
I, I, I wanna, I wanna ask on the, on the public safety thing, uh, I guess Rebecca or somebody who's in charge of the boardwalk.
The boardwalk is owned by the city, so I guess the mayor would be in charge of it.
Okay, mayor, then we'll ask you. Uh, they got this this afternoon. These proprietors down there, and I appreciate their business, but there's one or two of them, uh, there's one, especially one, it's got six vehicles parked down there. This is taking away from the public. Could we ask these guys to maybe park on Washington Avenue?
We certainly can. That, that, that was an issue when I first came on board as mayor, uh, and it really wasn't being enforced by the city on any of the, uh, merchants over there, so we just kind of laid back a little bit, but we certainly could ask them. If we do ask them, that would apply to all of them, of course, so.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, all of them, uh, it's, 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 it's taken, I mean, it's obviously been crowded down there. Everybody's excited to get out. And I got two, two calls on it today. The owners are parked. We can't park.
Right, so, so we can take care of that. We can enforce it. We'll, uh, we'll go and talk to them, let them know that, uh, we've decided now that we're going to be enforcing that, uh, and they'll be allowed one vehicle per, per, if that's what you guys want to do. If you don't want any vehicles there, we can do that as well.
Well, I can understand one, but when it comes to five or six for one business and then it could go down the line and two or three for that business and it, it just chases people away.
Certainly, we can do that.
And then I talked to Rebecca last week and she gave me a very complicated answer about the parking at Dimitris. Apparently we own a couple of those parking spaces?
The, uh, uh, and, and I'll let, uh, Randy and the city attorney, uh, interject anytime they want, but my understanding is that, uh, years ago, we had a mayor who made a deal with the owner there at Dimitris where the city owns the one parking slot closest to the road, but not the whole parking slot. We only own most of the parking slot. So there's a question as to who actually owns that parking slot there. That last row of parking slots, uh, closest to the road.
Yeah, Rebecca.
That's been, it's been an issue right along since we came on. We have a pretty cordial relationship with Jamie over there and, uh, so far it really hasn't been a problem or any issues, uh, so. Uh, but I don't, I'm not sure what the issue is. The, the answer to your question is that the city does own a small piece of that last row of parking slots closest to the road.
That, that, that was the question the, uh, woman that, one of our citizens asked me and I says, I have no idea and I, I asked Rebecca and she gave me photos of this parking lot, but, so. I guess my answer to that, to that person would be the first, what, two or three Rebecca, uh, we, we, they could park on and it would be city property. Without getting told, without getting tickets.
The last, the last row off of Central Avenue is actually part of Central Avenue. If you remember, Central Avenue used to be ninety feet. And, uh, as Central Avenue was built up, it was generally encroached on, for example, the, the building there off the second block. The rural minis, we, that, we had to give it easy onto Central Avenue.
Hey, um, I called earlier. Uh, I had a couple of questions. Do you guys still need a photo from the King Street wire? Cause I saw that in my email.
Oh.
What is that?
She was talking to us.
No.
That it was at two in the morning?
The third row is actually. Front half.
Hang on, hang on a minute. Hey, hang on a minute. Hang on a minute. Richard, hang on a minute. Hang on. We got somebody walking over. Everybody check their phones and their computers. We got somebody walking all over us.
So I'm gonna submit that again. Can we run that, Sidney? Okay, cause the other one for some.
There we go.
Okay.
I'm sorry, guys. Basically, the, the Jamie's lot is the building and then it's close to that parking lot. And it goes to about halfway be, on that third row of, which is actually that last six feet or so is part of Central Avenue. Uh, and as I was saying before, historically, people have been encroaching on Central Avenue because it used to be a ninety foot road and then they narrowed it down to sixty-six feet. So technically the city still owned it. Handshake deal was done apparently, but nothing was ever filed publicly. Essentially have to file a, a use agreement just to make it whole, make it official.
I was asked, so I had to ask you guys.
Understood.
Anything else?
I'm done.
Okay. Councilwoman Nichols?
No, not for here. I got confused.
Oh, I have quite a, I have quite a bit I, I need to talk about tonight, but, uh, I'll bring that up at the meeting, so it's on record. Um, going to, uh, number eight, unfinished business. See, and none go to free file resolution.
Number seventy-two, resolution authorizing contract with York State D E C for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty environmental restoration program funding.
Any discussion council? Rebecca, I do have a question. You know, I, I remember twenty years ago, McLean Nichols was, uh, the one who secured that money for that project. I was just wondering whatever happened to the original funding for that.
So the project did get completed for a record of decision and what that record of decision means is it basically lays out how you clean up the site, but there was never funding given to actually clean it up. So we went after funding to do just that, to clean up the site. And, um, now we, uh, received the grant from New York State D E C and then our match portion, um, National Grid has a brownfield program and, uh, they'll be, uh, um, completing our match.
Is that something that we talked about in our C D V G? Can we pull some money out from that or not?
Uh, no, no, that, that can't be done because it's technically a D L D C owned property, so. Um, no, we can't, but like I said, this, this won't come out of any city budget line, um, specifically, it'll be funded through the D C grant and the National.
Okay, any other discussion council? Number seventy-three.
Resolution accepting electrical contract for Main Street, Third Ward Pump Station repairs and upgrades under the twenty-nine consent order.
Any discussion council? Randy Lowbid?
Yes, and, uh, the estimate was four hundred thousand. They came in at three twenty-two.
And their union, I V W?
Uh, you have Beck Electric, you have local and you.
Okay, thank you. Seventy-four.
For seventy-four, resolution authorizing conveyance of city Dunkirk city-owned vacant lot and paper street parcels to adjoining residence.
Any discussion council? Seventy-five.
Resolution for intro number six to local law number six dash twenty twenty, city of Dunkirk, a local law to amend the city code, chapter fifty-six, sections twenty forty, twenty sixty, thirty-ten, and thirty-thirty.
I'm gonna make, uh, any discussion on that one, council?
Uh, no, we, we, I think we gotta set that up for a table and do a public hearing.
Yep. New business.
I have a walk-on, sir.
What is that?
Uh, this is from the Juneteenth Committee. Uh, June twelfth, twenty twenty. Mayor Rosa, City Common Council, Dunkirk, um, city officials. The Juneteenth twenty twenty Celebration Committee has requested the use of Memorial Park, Lake Shore Drive West, Dunkirk, New York to hold a rally on Friday, June sixteenth, twenty twenty, beginning at six P M. June nineteenth. It is, is the official observance of the African American Emancipation Day, which began in eighteen sixty-five. There will be presentations from various speakers on the importance of Juneteenth, especially in light of everything going on in the world today. We will expect that the rally should not last any longer than two hours. Community members will be encouraged to wear masks and practice social distancing in light of COVID nineteen. The Juneteenth Celebration Committee will have masks available for everyone who does not have one. Um, I look forward to hearing from you and your, at your earliest convenience. Very truly yours, Loretta Slatton-Turin.
Any discussion council?
Yeah, dude, go ahead, go ahead, Judge.
If, if we're gonna do this for them, and I have nothing against it, but if we're doing it for them, we gotta keep an open mind what, what's coming up. What's gonna be, once we open this book, it's gonna be open.
I, I was kind of gonna just say that, um, I, I'm, I'm thinking that this is because of the, uh, whole COVID nineteen thing. They had canceled their, uh, Juneteenth Celebration Weekend and now, and they, they did that fairly early. They canceled it and now that, um, now that it's coming up to, uh, where things are opening, I think that's why we're getting it at this late part of it, but, um, I think, I think that that coincides with the, the way that we're opening and what phase we're in and stuff like that, so, um, I would, I would definitely like to, uh, make the first to grant them the, the permission to do that and grant the loudspeaker pending, uh, whoever else needs to sign off on it.
Where was this gonna be held again? Did I miss it?
Memorial Park. They do that there every, every year.
I'll second it.
Yeah, we, we always, I, I know that in the past we, we always okayed it, but I want to make sure that, um, I know it's the COVID nineteen, everyone's using that, but, uh, after today, I, I, I say that we don't, I don't like to get something today and I gotta vote on it for, for three days, you know, after that. So I think that we gotta get back to our old, uh, protocol as a thirty-day notice and, uh, because i- if we don't, we're just gonna be getting this. It seems like it's, we're, we're getting more and more and more of this, but um, we need to get back to the thirty-day, uh, notice instead of the walk-in, so as of today, I say no more. I mean, we'll okay this, but then after that, we gotta get back to, back to the regular books on the rules on the books.
When did the walk-in come in?
If we, oh, if we okay this, we're gonna okay everything from this point on. Let's move on.
Yeah, it came in today, Nancy.
Okay.
That's all I have, sir.
Okay, uh, need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
By Nichols. Kirk Colorado. Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bumanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at Large Vandenvoer?
Aye.
Uh, meeting's adjourned. See you guys in five minutes. We'll start the regular meeting. Take a break.
It's old school.
Is Gabe around? Can he hear us? I just had a couple of phone calls, nobody can hear us, it's all muffled. They got the volume turned up on their TVs way high and nobody can hear us.
Yeah, that's what that's what um Dan Manzello said, we we rebooted, we're trying to take care of it right now.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
It's coming up good on mine.
On YouTube, they said it's okay, but not on the thirteen oh one.
Let's see, go direct TV. And do YouTube.
Also, does anybody have their phones?
Go to YouTube, tell them to go to YouTube, it's louder.
YouTube is working just fine.
That's what I just said.
Spectrum issue.
Does anybody have their phones close to the whatever apparatus they're using, cuz I get a bunch of squelch whenever anybody's talking.
Believe that was the reporter.
Me too.
Yeah, I muted her when she she probably didn't know that she was unmuted.
No, wait, it's still going on.
Hey, Gabe, do you want us to wait, or do you want us to continue?
Um, no, just continue, uh, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Don, you all set?
I'm set.
Marty?
Let's turn back and roll.
Marty?
He was there.
He's on mute.
Marty, you ready, Marty?
Are you on mute? Oh.
They can hear you.
Can you guys hear me now?
Now.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Well, we could hear you earlier too, before you put it on mute.
They must have muted you cuz you're.
Yeah, I got muted by somebody over there. It was me, yeah.
That's cuz you guys were talking.
Good, you all set?
This is hands-free here, hands-free.
I'm okay.
Edwin?
Yes, sir.
Let's go. All right, I'd like to call the regular meeting order on June sixteenth of two thousand twenty. At five thirty P M, Kirk color roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Here.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Here.
Councilmember Nichols?
Here.
Councilmember Adlarge Vandenvoer?
Here, please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, we remain in standing then?
Yeah, if you remain, everybody remains standing for after the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
For which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
As of right now, I'd like to say a condolence to the Donaldson family, Clara, a longtime friend and employee of the city of Dunkirk. And I would like to have a moment of silence. Thank you. Certification for prior meeting?
This is to certify that an official copy of the minutes of the common council meeting of Tuesday, June second, twenty twenty, was presented to the mayor on Friday, June twelve, twenty twenty. Pursuant to section three point zero three of the Dunkirk City Charter, all items presented to the mayor are now in full force and effect. And witness whereof I have here to set my hand and the seal of the city of Dunkirk, New York, the sixteenth day of June, twenty twenty.
Need a motion dispensing of the reading of the minutes?
So move.
By Williams?
Stoyl.
Second by Stoyl. Kirk color roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Um, aye, but I have a question regarding this.
Yeah, you just gotta, you just gotta.
Councilmember Adlarge Vandenvoer?
Hi, Carrie, reading privilege of the four regulations.
I have one letter that that came in. It's a city com, city council meeting, Debbie Razamowski. Uh, Tuesday, six sixteen, twenty twelve, eleven thirty A M. I would like to ask the common council to address concerns I have regarding area around Wright Park at tonight's meeting. Number one, parking and on lawn at the end of North Warsaw Street in the park. There are many available parking areas, examples skate park and lots across the stadium. Um, people are throwing grass entry areas when wet and unsafely pecking out of the area onto roadways, which is already a tough area already. Number two, dumping of wood and assorted waste accumulating after initial park work left to accumulate at east end of stadium lot. Number three, unkept and abandoned boat storage area associated with Marina. Number four, walkway around Wright Park unsafe with very large cracks and tree roots making the liability of the city, and I want this to go on record. As prior notice. Uh, number four, large trees along creek area are a hazard and many are falling or leaning. Number five, final and more important issue is speed along North. From Lake Shore around park areas including Serval, Pine, and Wright Park Drive, especially to basketball and skate park. This is a park from Lake Shore to all the roads mentioned because number seven is included as a city recreation facility. Oh, owned by the school district, the areas around Serval and North. Are also known as many students during the typical year use the ball field around the out for outdoor physical education classes. I have no problem with traffic in the area as a as we. I'm sorry, as we are well aware of it as we have lived in the area. Park area for thirty eight years, but the speed is a huge safety concern, it's time the city start cleaning up the city before constructing new venues. This city is a mess and has long been there for before pandemic excuse. Number six, finally, if a true gateway to the city via outside event visitors entering from throughway is Route sixty to Main Street, why is this area so neglected? This is what people see first, my husband and I have tried very hard to maintain our property, including personally tearing down. A disgusting home and renovating the property to a park-like setting that extends to Pine Street. Our neighbors are all investing in their properties and many homes are sold quickly around you. Now it's time the city was, the city's responsibility to get things done. Deborah Razamowski, three seventy six Lake Shore Drive, East Dunkirk.
Is anybody else getting this stuff over a phone? Yes, somebody's talking over on on a phone covering us.
Yes.
It's hard to hear.
A lot of static.
It's terrible when uh when Edward, when I'm talking, when Edward was talking, it's like a reverb thing going on.
That wasn't good, I wasn't getting it. It's coming clear, real clear for me, so.
I'm I'm hearing it.
I think it's something we're just gonna have to deal with with this meeting, so just continue on, uh, hopefully Gabe or Dan can try to figure it out. Um, does anybody wanna respond to uh W Razamowski?
I I wanna say at least the the part about the speed, I I talked to to Deb the other day and and at least the uh the speed around there. I think I've brought that up before, um, I'm hoping to sit down with with the chief and and uh. With with Jig, who chairs the Safety Committee, and uh propose that we do a fifteen mile an hour speed limit. Uh, in that area, I'd also like to extend that to uh changing it to fifteen mile an hour speed limit uh. Main Street uh from Sisson to Beagle and everything north of uh Pine Street there also. Um, we'll uh, we'll we'll talk about that at a at the at a Safety Committee meeting, but I do know that. I have mentioned it here, and I think maybe even at the D P W Committee meeting before, that I'd like to see that, or at least I put it in an email at one time. And um, I'd like to see us lower that cuz I agree with her, uh, that area is a park. And we should be at a lower speed limit through there with the school, with the school there, with Wright Park, with the stadium, with all Little League down there. And then we're also gonna be putting up a playground in between Serval and Oslad, I'd I'd like us to go. Right from Oslad over to Wright Park Drive and try to put all that at fifteen there.
Anybody else from the council?
I agree with uh Don and uh I'll I'll check with Dave on his availability uh for uh safety meeting. He's been more than cooperative with me.
And. Yeah, Jig, even if you and I wanna sit with him and talk at least about that issue, and then you can talk about it more at a safety meeting or whatever, it anyways, good, just.
Yeah, the only reason there hasn't been a safety meeting is the same thing, there hasn't been any meetings, it's just because it is privacy, but. I see Dave on a pretty regular basis, I email him and they, he's the most cooperative department head I I ran into yet.
Any.
Over your head, Dave.
Any department heads? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is it my turn?
No, Dave.
I just think with the upcoming playground, that is that is also uh a concern with reducing the uh speed limit.
Good idea. Any department heads wanna answer that?
Sure, but the uh. Before we get to speed limit, the uh the dumping on the Prominchenko Stadium Parking Lot. And other areas in the city where dumping should not be allowed, if the public sees that, the police call the police desk at three six six two two six six. We like to catch them in action and prosecute them. Uh, we've been watching that area at Prominchenko, there there've been tires dumped there and trees and things like that. Totally out of the, unnecessary, and uh, so if the public sees somebody, um, give the patrol desk a call. And I'm sure the chief will, you know, have somebody dispatched to go down and talk to those people and do the appropriate thing. Uh, we can put additional signs there, I'll have somebody work with the chief to make sure. Uh, he's okay with those, and the mayor's okay with those, and put down no dumping, and we'll put down police. Could be for doing that, so good point on on that, the boat situation. I think if Rebecca and I can talk to Mr. Pringle, who has rented that space. And if he's abandoned those boats, I'd be happy to get rid of those boats and clean that, so I totally agree with all of her points. And then relative to the speed limit, that would be something to to negotiate with the chief. And whatever the chief decides, uh, Public Works will immediately put the signs up, uh, don't do that. Thanks.
Yeah, it's a good idea, Randy, I mean, even with the woods over there by by the stadium, maybe we could even put some of those deer cams up there, you know, hunting cams and.
That's what I was just thinking.
You know, and we could uh, we could take the license plate down and see who's dumping down there and uh check them and find them and arrest them.
Dave, did you have anything to say?
Am I here now? You got me?
Yeah.
We got you now, Dave.
I'll put them, I'll put them on, I'll have our uh guys and girls run some radar down in that area, we can get together, Jig, uh, for Public Safety. Uh, committee somewhere along the line here, even if it's just a couple of us, we'll talk about some speed limit changes in that area. And whatever we decide, um, I have, I have great cooperation and luck with Mike, particularly from D P W, they'll get those signs up immediately, they're very good with working with me, so. Whatever we decide, um, we'll we'll try and get it fixed to it, but in the meantime, I'll have some radar down there.
Uh, David, along that line, uh, Main Street has become a dumping place. It's become the new uh trash place, I want uh, once, every every week, it's 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 the same sp- same area. And I had private citizen picking up the the rubbish and bringing them up to the barns. I I, I I would ask if your guys ever catch them. To prosecute them the all the way.
Yep, is that Main Street Extension, Jig?
Yes, they're right across, right around uh the old Pecos Place, and it's it's, people are screaming at me, I says, I'm not there to see it.
Well, we'll see, we'll, we'll see if we can keep an eye on that area for a little bit too.
Yeah, it's right around the dog pound and all that stuff.
Okay.
All the way up, yeah.
Thanks, Dave.
It's between Green Street and Greco.
Okay.
On the west side of the street.
Okay, uh, moving on, we'll go to uh Communication of the Mayor, including disapproval messages.
Mr. Chairman, uh. I just have one announcement, uh, we met today with uh our federal and state representatives at Lakefront Boulevard. Uh, and had a discussion there, uh, the the issue has been that the uh female representatives at the federal level. Uh, have to come out to do their inspection, they have not been here as of yet. Uh, as you know, this council has passed resolutions, we've already uh have the the engineers and the contractor ready to roll. Uh, but uh, the good news is that uh we received notice later today, or earlier, I should say, that uh. They're going to be here Friday morning, so we remain hopeful that they will show up Friday, and if they do, then uh we remain hopeful that we could start that project early next week. So that's the good news for today, uh, as you know, today we started Phase Three, and there are new updated guidelines. For those guidelines on businesses, you can go to forward dot N Y dot gov, uh, all the businesses are aware of this. Uh, and again, these guidelines continue to change with each phase, so I would encourage everyone to become familiar with the new guidelines. Uh, and Jig and the chief, I just wanted to let you know, there is a uh, an order from the governor about uh police reform, I would be uh. I'm looking to uh sit down with the uh committee, uh, Public Safety Committee. And perhaps I'm looking at bringing in some members of our community so that we can uh start that process. We have nine months to complete the process and submit our plans. Uh, that's basically all that I have for today. Thank you.
Communications and public petitions. Number one, notice of claim Rafael Santiago of Ten East Corky Street for damages to his car's front passenger rim allegedly caused. By a pothole on Leopard Street between Sixth and Seventh Street on May twenty eight, twenty twenty at approximately ten P M.
Any discussion council?
Always said they got enough evidence.
Need a motion to refer this to the city attorney and Department of Public Works Director Woodbury?
So moved.
By Williams, second by Nichols?
Yep.
Kirk color roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Adlarge Vandenvoer?
Aye, Carrie, number two?
Number two, prior written notice from Sun Ling Wong of twenty five Armadillo Street notifying the city of a potential. Threat to health and safety posed by a tree in front of the house in the city right of way.
Any discussion council? Need a motion to refer this to Department of Public Works Director Woodbury?
Stoyl.
By Stoyl, second by Williams? Kirk color roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Adlarge Vandenvoer?
Aye, Carrie, number three?
summons in a civil action from Patty Ann Pusateri, administrator of the estate of Gregory Lee Galloway.
Any discussion council?
You're just going to the lot department.
Motion to refer this to city attorney by Councilman Stoyl, second by.
Second.
Councilman Williams. Kirk color roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Elijah Vandenhuber.
Aye, Kerry, number four.
Request from Thomas B. Volk to put his Spanish food stand and Charlie's curly fries stands in Memorial Park for the summer of twenty twenty. He is willing to pay a monthly fee to the city for space rent and use of electric and water hookups.
Any discussion, council?
Yeah, like we said in the workshop, um, um, I've been informed that a better alternative site than the Memorial Park. Would be the location between Tim Horton's and the Clarion. Uh, and then also, uh, as we make this motion, uh, we gotta also remember that, um. This, this money goes, this is for the city. This is in a D L D C effort.
Right, so that the payment will go to the city clerk's office.
Correct.
Correct. Any other discussion?
They will be notified of the change in location.
That's correct, ma'am.
Thank you.
Need a motion to refer to appropriate departments as well as approved subject to appropriate insurances and usual conditions, and also for the alternate location between Tim Horton's and the Clarion.
Nichols.
By Nichols, second by Stoyl, Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Elijah Vandenhuber.
Aye, Kerry, number five.
Number five, letter from Cynthia Carnes notifying the annual Joe Carnes Memorial Softball Tournament has been canceled this year due to the health and safety concerns related to COVID nineteen crisis.
Any discussion, council?
This is usually a good tournament, just sad to see that they can't do it this year.
Yeah, they do an excellent job. I agree with you, Don, and uh, it is sad that the COVID nineteen took another loss, but uh, anybody else?
Being bigger and better next year.
Receive and file this, number six.
Number six, letter from City Assessor Thomas Mileczko. To the council informing them that he turned in his retirement notice to Mayor Rhodes, May eighteenth, twenty twenty. And then he will be in his office until June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Any discussion, council?
Paul, like, your last day of employment is live for you.
I'd like to uh, advise Tom to uh, take my advice and do what I called him. Moving on.
Full receipt, full receipt, yes.
Is uh, is, can we just get Rich? I mean, I know we all know how that position is filled. But can we just get Rich to uh, mention how that position is filled, uh, just? From the legal end of it for the, for the city?
Yeah, Rich, if you would like to explain how uh, we're gonna fill. Uh, the clerk assessor's job, Tommy's job, so the public would know to go on record.
Sure, so per the charter and the code, council selects a replacement. Uh, preferably somebody who, who has the qualifications and certifications or somebody who's provisionally, you know, set up to take the proper training. Uh. It's pretty straightforward. Uh, then uh, state law kicks in and a special election will be held. At some point either this year or next year, likely this year, subject to board of elections, uh, to replace, to fill the position for the remainder of the term.
Didn't, doesn't the charter say that the, it ends the, the term, the appointed term ends the year after? The, the original uh, position would have been filled?
That I am not sure.
What the charter says. They, they would end up, end up, since he'd, he'd be running for reelection next year, whoever's appointed would, would end up. Staying in there, I believe, from what I read in the charter. Um, until their term would end. At the end of the year following the next possible election.
Okay. Let me look that up and see for sure. I do know that council picks the interim. I don't know whether the special election kicks in for sure. At the, at the time of this calendar year for this cycle, or if it is at the end of this current term that Tom.
Yeah, there's no mention of special election in the charter at all for it. It just says that their term is.
Right, so when the charter's silent on some things, the state law kicks in and then that would fall under the public officers law. And what the scheme is for, for filling those seats as an elected.
Well, if it's something different than the charter, then maybe we gotta get it out of the charter and then maybe we oughta have that, put something else in there then, just. I'm looking at the charter and the charter tells me that whoever we put in there is basically in there till the end of next year. And so that would mean that they'd be up for reelection or election since they haven't been elected yet, um, next November.
I'll have to look that up in terms of the length of that interim term and get back to you on that and make sure I get your full counsel.
All right, just so you would have known.
Okay, thanks. Number seven.
Number seven, loudspeaker application request from Amanda DeGolier of ninety nine Ounce Street and neighbors to use the standard PA and amps in their yards. On July second, twenty twenty from seven PM to eleven PM for a private band.
Any discussion, council? Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Elijah Vandenhuber.
Aye, Kerry, that's also a motion to refer to the usual conditional. Number eight.
Number eight, loudspeaker application request from Henry Hooton Senior of two twelve Webster Street to use DVDs and live band on July third, twenty twenty from seven PM to eleven PM. For a retirement slash birthday party.
Any discussion, council?
Uh, like I said earlier at the workshop, uh, this is something he does every year. It's usually just a birthday party, but now he's getting his re- retirement. Pay in now, so he's gonna celebrate that too. It's. Really good event that he has there, so it's, it's pretty good. And I'll, I'll first this one.
Yeah, like I know, he's, he's done this in the past for years and years. Uh, he's a great guy and uh, I wish him the best in the birthday and the retirement, so. Need a motion to refer to appropriate departments as well as approved subject to appropriate insurances and usual conditions.
So move.
By Williams, second by Bemanto.
Yep.
Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Elijah Vandenhuber.
Aye, Kerry, number nine.
Number nine, loudspeaker application request from Frank Beach to use amps and speakers on July fourth, twenty twenty, alternate date July fifth, twenty twenty. From three PM until seven PM for a band practice at eleven, Lakefront Boulevard.
Any discussion, council?
Just saying if
Chief Portolano, would you like, I'm sorry.
Just so people are gonna stop when they hear the music, to please be courteous in the side streets and not, um, take up side street parking. And as the chief said on parking wear.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna get to. Chief, uh, Chief Portolano, do you wanna mention what you did in the workshop?
Yeah, um, I don't see any issues with it. I'm sure it'll be fine, uh, as long as they keep the parking along the rail side, uh, and we don't have any issues getting emergency vehicles. Um, I'm, I'm very sure that Frank will keep everything, uh, the way it needs to be down there and hopefully, uh, some people get to listen to some good music.
Any other discussion, council?
Not, no.
Nope.
Need a motion to refer to appropriate departments as well as approved subject to appropriate insurances and usual conditions.
So move.
By Williams.
Nichols.
Second by Nichols, Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Elijah Vandenhuber.
Aye, Kerry. Moving on, the report sustaining committees and boards and commissions. Councilman Williams.
Um, well, uh, the, the communication from Mrs. Rosomalsky kinda. Took a lot of what I was gonna say. Uh, she did mention the parking on the grass at, at Wright Park, um. That's all over. That's at Wright Park. That's all over the, the point. And like, like I've said at several of these meetings. It really stinks that, you know, you gotta tell people you shouldn't park on the grass, because if they're old enough to have a driver's license, they should know that they shouldn't be. Parking on the grass, but uh, whatever we can do for it, that would be great to, to stop that from happening. Um. The uh, the Main Street beach area and the side on, uh, behind the, um. Behind the high rise there. That, that's a mess. I know they were down there today trying to clean it up and, um, they got a few of the pieces of dock out of there and, and there's still more there. Um. I, I don't know what to do with that. I, I stood on the sidewalk with some of the people that live around there. Because they had called and had, had Councilwoman Nichols and I stop by to point out a few things to us. And when you're standing on the sidewalk right by the rail, you can barely see the stacks. Of, of NRG from, from there with all the, the growth on that berm and everything and. I don't know if, if council's fine with it. I'd, I'd like to get something in there to, to clean that right up and. Knock that down and clean that up and have everything there. Maybe, maybe it's still wanna have some grass. That you only go in and brush hog a couple, two, three times a year, so that people aren't using it as a beach, but um. I, I think that we need to clean that up and straighten that up. That's. You know, if people that are staying at the Clarion, they go for a walk and, and they see that mess that's back there. If I was them, I probably wouldn't ever want to visit again just by looking at all the trash and junk that's back there. So I, I wish that, um, I wish we would clean that up and, and do something with that. Um. And the other part is, is uh, the fields are in the same condition. Uh, not that bad a condition, I guess, as, as the, the one side of the beach there, but um. You know, we, we need to get concentrated on the fields. I got a lot of calls from some different people that are in the uh, travel leagues. That are interested in working, um, uh, Dopey's interested, Tim Dovias is interested in doing the, the Falcons tournament again. And um, he is, everybody's saying that. Bring volunteers down to fix these fields and I think through shared services with the city school district, I believe the school district has a piece of equipment that can. Kinda till that up and get all the grass out of it and make it look good, so um, if we can work in that direction and, and try to clean some of these things up, that would be really great.
Paul, you wanna intervene? Go ahead, Marty.
I'm hoping that Randy intervenes or somebody does sooner or later.
Yes.
Councilman Williams, um. Um, Councilman Stoyl got ahold of me yesterday. We talked about the issues with uh. The Falcon Club Tournament. I got ahold of Councilman Vandenhuber and wanted to go down there and show him how bad it was. I took a look at the fields, all three fields yesterday after work. And uh, we did get ahold of uh, someone from high school and they said they would love to. Share services with us and uh, we're gonna get one of our men down there to help out and get that started as early as Friday.
All right, that's good. And then, um. Randy, uh, they talked about earlier about the, the garbage on, on Main Street Extension. I would bet that if we'd ever get out there and clean up all that growth of weeds and everything out there. Then the garbage wouldn't be able to hide so easy out there. So are we planning on getting that stuff picked up anytime soon?
Sure, uh, I'll address all the issues you got. The uh, uh, Main Street area. Uh. If uh, people were walking today, starting at six thirty this morning was our first time we had heavy equipment on the beaches. And the mayor's asked us to get the beaches pristine by the twenty eighth and we hope to meet that schedule. Um, the operator, uh. On the, on the clam bucket payloader, um, there's one of our excellent parks worker, uh, local line employee, uh, Jim Ganey. Uh, really did a nice job, was carefully scraping the sand off the, off the road, putting it, and he's really grooming that beach very nicely, so the east side. Uh, of that walkway is starting to look really well because of Mr. Ganey's efforts. The uh, west side is part of the New York State Park system. Now that the New York State Park system has have, is rehiring and getting their people going, I'll reach out to them and see if they can. Uh, start trimming some of that stuff. We can help them as well, but we want that area to look good. Uh, we've done it before, uh, but it does naturally kind of collect things in the stagnant marina area, so it takes, uh. It takes some work. We've had a volunteer, uh, Jim Manzer has done some of the trash cleanup on his own. Art Revitalized Dunker, it's been a great, done a great job, service to the city, so totally agree with you on Main Street. We got a really good start on that with Mr. Ganey's work today. Uh, the difference between what it looked like at six thirty and what it looks like now is incredible. And I just commend the parks people for, for the city for continuing that and for uh, making all the beaches ready fairly soon. Uh, the um, ball fields, we will work with, uh, all the people, uh. To, to help, we're, uh, as needed to make those look good. Like, uh, like the councilman said, they don't look that bad. They, they've had a little bit of grooming, uh, in anticipation of this opening. So I've seen that, uh, first base, second base, third base and so forth, there were cooks we have our employees. But the, the ball fields will take a little bit of work, they're gonna be ready to go. We have some excellent ball fields, especially the stadium with the. Blue LED lights, it makes it look like a, like you're in the Yankee Stadium, and so it's a wonderful facility. Uh, the parking on the grass is something we can address. Uh, we, DPW signage and a police department. And then the garbage on Main Street is a new phenomenon. Um, obviously somebody is taking advantage of, we think from out of town. Um, we are going to go through, I probably shouldn't give the handout because of the persons listening. Uh, but if there's any kind of hint as to who it is within the bag. That we carefully, that we don't, now, I wanna advise people, if you see garbage on the side of the road, don't be poking around in it. Sometimes there's dangerous items in there. So, uh, we will do that with our proper protective equipment and. We'll look, look at the bags and see if we can identify them. We will clear the area to make it look more visible. Uh, and if anybody sees anybody littering or throwing garbage bags, let's try to catch them in real time. Um, wherever we can put cameras up, uh, if we might be able to reach that area with a telephoto lens camera on this new, uh, on a pump station. Uh, improvements, we, uh, we wanna monitor, we wanna use modern technology to try to monitor more areas. And get them, and get them on film with a license plate and things like that, so who's ever doing that? We're after you. We're gonna get you. Uh, I'm totally agree with you. I think I addressed all your issues. Uh, did I, councilman?
Uh, yes, yes, I believe you did.
Randy, Randy, I think those uh, cameras on the pump station on Main Street are a great idea. It's just about the area where the rubbish is.
Thanks, councilman.
All right, I also, um, just to, just to start and give a little bit extra of, of why I'm gonna be asking this one is. Uh, this is, this is gonna be for Richard, because Richard gives us a lot of different emails and, and things that. You know, a lot of things that council's trying to do. Um, we're being told a lot that, that we're overstepping and we're not doing things the way we should. And um, I'd like to bring to attention to Richard the uh. Article six of the, of the city charter, the Department of Law. Um, under, under G. It, it seems to say that, uh, if you're gonna be doing anything with personnel in there, adding a new position or anything. That, um, it's, it's with the, as authorized by common council. Would you agree with that, Rich?
Yes.
So I guess by saying that, I, I'd like to say for probably two months, I've been trying to find the. The uh, resolution that creates a paralegal position in the, in the law department. So if you could get me that resolution and let me know where council approved that, I'd be very happy.
Sure, so just to answer that, and I, I can go back actually one better. You wanted to know about the exact time when the vacancy. Election, look that up while you're speaking. I had that answer for you and then I'll go to the next one. The uh, the language is a little bit blurry, but in the charter, it says the appointee. Shall serve until the commencement of the political year, next succeeding the first general election. After the happening of the vacancy at which a successor may be elected. And the vacancy shall be filled at such, such election, the entire term. If I'm reading that correctly, that means the interim fills in until the election cycle of twenty twenty four. And that, they would fill the And that they would fill the person like to fill that post twenty twenty-four. Is that correct?
Correct. That's what, that's what I thought it read.
Okay. Yeah, it's just, it sounds a little convoluted, but yeah, it gets us there. So there's that. Uh, on the other issue, it doesn't say there exactly in the charter that it needs resolution. It just says council authorization. Council was made aware that we were creating that position away from a secretary position because we wanted to leave management confidential. We had those conferences now almost three years ago and the position was approved by council in the budget.
So how, how else is everything else authorized by council? Everything's authorized by council as authorized by common council. Everything's authorized by common council through resolution. So a verbal, a conversation, an email or whatever, that that doesn't constitute, how are we paying somebody to be a paralegal in that office and it hasn't even, and it hasn't even passed a resolution by council? How by budget with the auditors, how can we actually pay for somebody to do that? When council never approved that position, council doesn't know how much that person is being paid, council doesn't know any benefits that's going on with that. You did that all. We don't see any of it. I I'd like to know where a resolution is and if there isn't a resolution, we'll gladly make one and and put that in there.
Mister Chairman, can I, Mister Chairman, can I intervene, please?
Yeah, go ahead.
Want to, I just want to remind the councilman, I'm not sure why he's bringing stuff up that he was a part of. But uh, the budget was approved with this person in there for two years in a row while he voted yes for that, for those budgets. So uh, for him to claim now that he was unaware of this is ludicrous.
I never said I was unaware of it.
I have no idea why he's bringing this up.
Never said I was unaware of it. Through COVID, I've had a lot of time to read through the code and the charter. And a lot of times, we're being told that we're overstepping. Yet, things seem to happen that other people are doing things without getting the authorization. Authorization is a, is a resolution and a resolution is what we should be doing.
You should have asked for a resolution
Alright, alright.
Three years ago when the position was created.
This is a council meeting, Mayor, and I wasn't done talking.
You should have asked for that resolution three years ago when the position was brought in and you voted just on the budget. That would have been the time for you to bring it up.
Excuse me, this is a council meeting, Mayor. Do not do that again or I'll ask you to leave.
That's okay. If you don't want me to be a part of it, I'll leave.
See you later. Bye. Let's go. Council, this is a council meeting. We're going to continue as a council. Richard, are you done answering Councilman Williams? I can finish. There's a difference between uh, what I was telling you, uh, Councilman Williams about difference between legislative branch duties and executive branch duties and a procedural issue. This is a procedural issue and I'd be happy to do a resolution. If you'd like to sponsor, I need a second and we can put that in the next cycle.
I, I, that's what I was kind of getting at because I I'm worried about the the stuff with that and plus um, I'm also aware that there's really nothing that's followed. So part of that resolution, I would want that position to be part of nine twelve.
That's not, that's not up for negotiation. We already worked that out.
Then then stop the, then stop the position because I don't know why we're, I don't know why we're paying it. And the idea of saying that it it's when you vote on a budget, a budget is a line that you want to put money into so that, so that you're ready and you can spend it the next year. So if you put a million dollars in there, then you could fill, fill a million people into your thing and I'll pay them all a dollar. That's bullcrap. We shouldn't be doing it that way. That's part of why I keep saying about the transparency. I've been against this idea of giving raises and positions through the budget process. I've spoke about it before. So we need to, we need to do this by resolution from now on to be more transparent.
Not a problem, sir. Take care of that next week.
Paulie. Okay, moving on.
Paulie.
You're up now anyways.
Oh, well, I just wanted to comment on, on spinning off of Don here. Is that okay?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, I do remember being those budget meetings and I do remember for that position to be funded. And uh, I can't remember off the top of my head what it was, but uh, for for the benefits in the package and the the salary, that's public knowledge if anybody really didn't know that. That's all I got to say.
From how? See through New York? Because we don't have anything on paper that says what she's getting paid.
I could tell you right now what she's getting paid if it'll make you feel better.
I, we don't need to do that here. I'd like to see, but where's the cut, where's the contract? Where's something on paper that says what's going on?
There is no contract.
No contract, no resolution, but yet we pay somebody. Alright, I'm done with my question and we'll move on. I'm going to do this all night.
Yeah, hang on a minute. Let me uh, Richard, just get the information with the councilman's asking for and then we can discuss this after our meeting, okay?
Not a problem.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Bamano, do you have anything else?
No.
Okay, Councilman Stowe.
Oh, I'm sorry. I do have, from my turn to talk, yeah, I do have a couple of things.
Sure.
Um, I got an announcement. There will be a finance meeting next Tuesday, June thirtieth, two PM in the mayor's conference room, social distancing, if those still apply by then, who knows what's going to happen. It changes every ten minutes. Also, uh, I would like to congratulate the three Concord High School women who uh, organized this uh, march two, two Saturdays ago. I'm very proud of them and what they did. I'd I'd like to thank the mayor and Police Chief Portolano for helping them organize this also. It was a very good event, uh, very quiet, well organized. And the policemen were there and uh, they were interacting with everybody. So that was, that was just a great time. I was pr- proud of those girls. I wanted to announce that to them. Also, uh, past Saturday, there was a food drive at the Concord High School for needy families in in the community. That went real, real well. And uh, I was glad to be, you know, come there and talking to some people. Met the new superintendent, very nice guy. And uh, the touch on the ball fields, um, talked to the mayor and uh, Councilman Vanover and Stowe yesterday and uh, everybody wants to have this tournament. We can make it happen. And it looks like they'll be in phase four. Two weeks into phase four by the time this happens. So hopefully this will go off. It should be okay as and I'll review a couple of rules here and there. We have to buy by. The main thing was can we get the fields ready? And so we talked to uh, one of the employees at the high school and uh, and uh, Councilman Vanover got ahold of, a couple of people he needed to get ahold of and uh, we're going to do some shared services together and uh, everybody seems to be on board and uh, we've got a month to get that ready. Paul, that's all I got.
Okay. Thanks, Marty. Appreciate it. Yeah, like Marty said, that we got our heads together yesterday and uh, um, hopefully we can get it, get uh, things accomplished with uh, shared services and it looks good right now. So moving on to uh, Councilman Stowe. You're on mute.
You're on mute, Rich.
Got it?
Yes, you're good.
Dave, I know I put a lot of crazy questions to you and I I put a lot of pressure on you, but you're the most cooperative uh, department head I've met in my life. The, the, Don brought it up earlier, uh, the parking on the grass. Down at Point Grass, it's they're just, they're parking between the bicycle thing and the park and the road. Can they, can we throw a couple of tickets out there maybe to, to slow these guys down? Screaming about this. And I know you guys got enough to do, but they're parking right in the middle. I mean, could, could they not warn them or they're, they're
Chief Portolano?
You're off, Dave.
Got me now?
You've got you.
Okay, I, I believe me, I, I'm no fan of anyone parking on the lawns anywhere in the park. I'm going to have to work with uh, Mr. Woodbury and Mike Porpiglia. Uh, maybe we can put some general signs up at the entrance to all the parks stating no parking on the grass. We don't have to put a thousand, no parking signs up everywhere. No park rules, no parking on any of the lawn areas, and I'll be glad to tag the hell out of all of them.
Yeah, Dave, because I stopped last week, the, the parks, Parks Department put two, I asked them, they put two brand new no parking signs up where Nancy complained a couple of weeks ago on the sand as we're turning into before you go into the actual park.
Right, right. We got those up.
The guy parked between the two signs.
Yeah, people just don't pay attention. They'll, they'll get a twenty-dollar reminder of it.
I said, take, I see the signs and he goes, who the hell is this? Okay, I'll see it. I mean, I know there's not much, you know, unless we put Jersey barriers up there.
I, I agree with you again and I think, I think I'd like to work with uh, Mr. Woodbury on getting some signs up uh, and and Mike Porpiglia at the entrance to all the parks, general park rules, no parking on any of the grass and then we could just go in there and tag them off.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Sounds good.
I'm done, Paul.
Thank you. Councilwoman Nichols.
Randy, um, I talked to you about um, the lights under the overpass on Roberts Road. They're still out. And um, I had an email today regarding this, also on the west side of Central and the east side of Swan. Randy, are you sleeping?
I'm, I'm writing down the information. I don't forget. I'm going to send an email to uh, Niagara National Grid right after we get off here. So lights uh, uh,
Roberts Road.
Lights that are out.
West side of Central.
And the, and the pass on Robert and then uh, on the west side. Okay, um, a lot of people have given me some information in uh, I don't know, usually they get to these things pretty quickly. And they're a little bit slow these days. So it could be the same situation. I'm going to ask them for an ETA on that and get them moving. It's a safety issue, so I want to.
Yeah, we had a lot of walkers. Um, I'd like to thank Ellen Glenn and Wanda for being so patient with me and handling all the tall grass that I've turned into them. They've done a great job. I also had a email today from a lady. She's concerned about Washington Park, Point Grass. She says they're disgusting. Why hasn't anyone worked on the playgrounds in Washington Park? But she also made a note and I think, Rich, you might want to take note on this one. She said, please note that we are not, it's um, they're worried about the grass being cut on the low or no cost housing projects in the city. Could you just touch base at this, of the responsibility of the city on that?
I'm sorry, Dan, so are you talking about public housing or are you talking about the Stella housing?
She didn't say which. She said low or no cost housing. So I'm assuming she's talking about any of the housing that is not city housing itself per, per se.
Public housing is, they have their own contractor, their own staff to do grass cutting. City has nothing to do with that. And the Stella projects, they have their own lawn care service. We don't
I think the point she was trying to make is that they're better, taken care of better than the cities. Doesn't understand as Randy is saying and uh, Mike, how short-staffed we are. We can't attack everything all at once.
Right. I do know that more staff is on the way for parks. I'm told that and also working on something have a new park supervisor soon or later and also potentially add another uh, position as well as try to stay high in some seasons. And the parks are going to be able to be
Okay, I have, um, with the Fourth of July festivities canceled, when is the budget money that was budgeted to those festivities?
I could, I can answer that. Uh, that money is still in there and we don't expect to be using it. We'll probably be using it at the tail end of the year to uh, make up for all the funds that we're not going to be receiving this year.
Okay. And um, one last thing. Several people have um, seen um, Hector mowing his lawn and I do know that he's been on a work from home march with specially visiting uh, festivals canceled currently. These people would like to know why he's not put to work in other areas such as the gate on Lucas Avenue, so it's open in a timely fashion. He's a nine twelve employee, so he should, I guess he should be utilized in that event. Now, now as I read the over time sheets that I've just gotten, he's put in for two hours of overtime. How can this be justified?
So uh, I'm glad you mentioned that because the plan is to put the, I just had a discussion today with the uh, union president for the local AFME nine twelve. And uh, as of today, we have decided that we are going to be putting some of the folks that have been working from home uh, to work in other areas. Uh, there is a process to be followed uh, according to the union contract. I believe seniority would be a part of that. And so we'll be looking at all of those things. As far as uh, singling out uh, Hector Rosas, I, I think that's wrong. I would never do that. Uh, I can say to you that if it's in the city's best interest that he get put to work, we'll put him to work wherever it is that that the city's needs are. Uh, again, following the union contract because he is a longstanding member of that union. So uh, I hope that answers your questions.
No, it didn't. And I didn't.
So what, what part of it didn't it answer? What do you, what do you want to know? Does Hector mow his own lawn? Yes, he does. So what, what is, what is your question?
How, how did he justify two hours of overtime when there's nothing for him to do?
We have a union contract that we follow and if he's doing something outside of his normal business hours of work, then he's allowed to cash in for overtime. Just like all the other members of the AFME local nine twelve.
But we've been short at the gate on Lucas Avenue for how long? That's a no-brainer job. Other area, other employees and I've known, I've been there, I've taken stuff there, my children have taken stuff there. The gates are not open. We've waited for them to open up. You're pulling people from other departments. Poor Mr. Woodbury's got to find this one, this one and that one to go over there to get the eight gates open. So our tax-paying residents of the city can get rid of their recyclables, their brush, their grass. But yet, your brother is sitting home, cutting his grass, doing nothing when he could be brought into Lucas Avenue to open that gate and take down plates and names. I'm sorry.
I, I, I understand that you don't like my brother and it's okay. But the bottom line here is that we have a contract to follow and I have tasked and directed our director and he can attest to this, that that brush pickup be taken care of. So if he can't do it, then I'll find someone that can. The bottom line is it's going to be taken care of.
That's, really, that's not the whole point at all. City residents want to do their own thing, so it's not putting a burden on the employees of the city for them. They're not going to wait till July for the next brush pickup. They want to get rid of the stuff that they have.
That's exactly my point. They, they should be allowed to get rid of it now, not tomorrow. So that's why we're doing what we're doing.
But you don't need to pull someone from Mr. Woodbury's office to work the gate when we have someone else that can work the gate.
Those decisions, those decisions have not been made by me. Those are the decisions made by the department head.
Push the blame onto somebody else.
No, the blame lies where it belongs. Nancy, if you don't want to believe the truth, don't believe it. I'm telling you the truth.
Okay, let's go. Come on, we're moving on here.
Done, I'm done.
Paul, I can add something real quick to that.
Yeah, sure.
Real quick, if um, talking about Hector, he's been in there probably over thirty-five years. So for him to go since he's in this home situation, you would have to go all the way down the seniority list before you get to him to call them people back by seniority by union contract.
I think the, I think what she's trying to get to and it's, it's, it's for everybody that sits on the council is that we're getting our overtime report and we're wondering why Hector would have two hours overtimes being at home when he couldn't adjust his schedule to not pound the city taxpayers for overtime when he's not showing up for work. I think that was the reason that everybody sees and then we get phone calls and we got to explain why and why Hector's getting two hours overtime, especially when all the festivals. And why Hector's getting two hours overtime, especially when all the festivals are canceled this year. I mean, it's just, it's mind boggling to, to the council. And I just wanna mention, I just wanna mention one other thing, okay? Listen, this is the first and last time I'm gonna say this. This is a council meeting. I don't care if you're out of order, if you're the mayor, a council, or department head, or a citizen, I will ask you to sit down and I would ask you to leave. So you will not interrupt me ever again. Let's get that very clear. We got a year and a half left. And I'm gonna set that premises right now. It will not happen again. All right.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
I'm done, I'm done, I'm done, Mayor. Miss, I'm done, all right?
Well, you lied to the public because the festivals and events have not been canceled.
I'm moving on. This is not your meeting.
Let's tell the public the truth. Let's inform them with the truth.
That is the truth, Mayor. Deal with it.
There's that, that your festivals have not been canceled this whole season. The festivals have not been canceled the whole season.
So what has he been doing since, what has he been doing since January? Nothing. Zero.
Listen, you don't like him, you have a personal vendetta.
I don't have a problem, but I have a problem with people that are stealing from the taxpayers' money. That's right, it's falsifying records.
Try to find them so we can get them arrested.
My problem is to be the watchdog for the taxpayers of the city of Dunkirk. That is our job, Mayor.
You're not doing that good a job.
I think I am. We'll see, we'll see, we'll see in three more years, see how tough you are.
Now, we'll see how tough you are.
So that, yeah, I know how tough I am, believe me.
Now you don't.
Yeah, believe me. You're a very weak person. You always will be. You always have, you always will be.
Let's try that.
So we're gonna go with this. So while we're on the subject of last week or two weeks ago, when I asked you, you were on a hiring freeze because of the COVID-19. You went out and hired your cousin Raymond Rosas for the city clerk's job. So that's another thing that everybody wants to know about. How is that possible?
I'd be more than happy, I'd be more than happy to answer that question. The, the answer is that Roger Hayden is there and he can tell you. We looked for the best qualified candidate and we found him. His last name happened to be Rosas. Do you not hire the best qualified candidate because his last name is Rosas? No, it was in the city's best interest to hire him, and that's a decision that we made.
How many, how many applications, how many applications did you get received for that job?
We looked at all of them.
How many?
Ten.
I wanna, I wanna see them.
Tomorrow when they come to City Hall.
And I wanna see them.
You're more, you're more, you're more than welcome to see them.
And I wanna see them.
State of emergency.
The hiring, that, that position needs to be filled. It's a local union position.
Well, so are the other ones over at Department of Public Works and Streets. They needed to be filled two years ago.
Yeah, well, like I said, we're dealing with, you asked me the question, I gave you the answer.
Okay, so that's good, all right. Okay, we're gonna move on then. I'll ask Roger, I'll ask Roger and we'll get the, we'll get the applications. Because I'm gonna foil this to make sure it's a true transfer over from where he's coming from. It's legal.
Mr. Chairman, you don't have to foil it, you can get it.
I will. And the other thing I wanna ask real quick is why is the city clerk's office sending people on the town of Dunkirk for marriage license? Richard, can you answer that?
I'm sorry.
I don't believe that's true.
Why is, why is everybody going to the city clerk's office and they're sending them out to the town of Dunkirk for marriage license? Because they said they don't know how to do it. Is that true or not?
I have no idea. I have not heard that at all.
The, the city clerk is a part of this meeting. Why don't we ask him?
I didn't ask you. I didn't ask you, Mayor.
Well, you're asking the city attorney about something that doesn't happen in this department.
Because he knows. He's a, he's the attorney, so I'm asking him.
He wouldn't know. It's not his department.
Hey, Mayor, I'm done. I'm gonna ask you to leave now, all right? You can sign off the meeting. I'm done with you today. I'm done.
I have an envelope.
Rich, so we're moving on to.
He's leaving.
Edwin, Edwin, is that, Edwin, is that, is that a true rumor that you guys are doing that?
You're muted, Edwin.
Answer it, Edwin.
He's muted.
Edwin, you're on mute.
There we go.
So if they come in and we set up an appointment and they're not happy with their date, then they will find somewhere else. Can go to Fredonia, they can go to Pomfret, they can go to Sheridan. There's several places that they can go. We don't tell them to go anywhere else, and we service our client, our customers, our citizens as best as we can. So you're not denying anybody for their marriage license, correct? Absolutely not. Okay, good. Rebecca, I do have another, I have a question for you. As far as, like, the mayor was asking, has anyone ever asked you? So I know you're the department head for, for your Hector supervisor. So has anybody from the mayor's office or from Randy's office asked you to move Hector and help out? All hands on deck for Parks or, or Lucas Avenue?
No, I haven't been asked.
All right, thank you. Good. The other thing I wanna ask you, with all these empty buildings that are bought by a couple individuals in a Dunkirk, they're just left vacant. Are they have, do they have any plans on doing anything for the downtown businesses or anything?
I know they're working on selling a couple to, are you talking about the lessers maybe on Central, a lot of vacant ones? Yeah, I know that they've been working, obviously the city bought the Sterns Building from them. They're working on a deal with hopefully Central Station. They are trying to move on them, and we're working with them to try to help them find some people that are interested in buying as well, that actually will utilize them.
Like P and G and everything, the people that, the guy that owns that and owns other buildings around the city is, it just seems like nothing's being done with these buildings.
Yeah, I, I mean, we're, we're putting pressure on and he has plans for them is what he's told us, so that's, that's as much as I know.
Can we keep putting pressure on them?
Definitely, yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Chief Portolino, just a couple things for you. I'm sure that everybody's. I, I talked to everyone prior to the meeting, that, you know, the fireworks have been going off in the city of Dunkirk. It's just, it's crazy, you know, just, just everywhere. And I know it's hard to try to pinpoint where they're coming from, but. You know, just, and I'll let you answer to a couple of questions that. Plus, the car music and the loud mufflers. The mufflers are just driving everybody crazy. I think that's 90% of our phone calls. Are the, the mufflers, the loud music, and the fireworks.
Chief, you're on mute.
Good luck today. Is that it? You got me?
Yes, yep.
As far as the fireworks, we've been receiving a lot of complaints. I'm going to put a media release out and do the best we can to let everybody know. What we ask from our end is for everyone, when they hear it happening, to call immediately to the desk or send a car. And we'll do the best we can to get in the area and find out where they're coming from and shut it down. As far as the noise issues from the vehicles, the mufflers and the music. I know we've written dozens of those tickets in the last couple of weeks. We will continue to, to hit that. The mufflers and the music are part of the city's noise ordinance. And hopefully, maybe we can have a conversation with our judge to make sure that he really lets him understand whether finding that is unacceptable.
Right, yeah, I do have a phone call in to the Honorable Judge John Kuzdale, and I'm gonna have a talk with him. And hopefully, maybe we can get a press release out there. I know that you're on the radio tomorrow. If you could stress that again.
Absolutely. I will bring it up tomorrow on the radio show, and I will put out a summer press release this week. And I will hit it very hard with the music and the noise and just make it be known that, you know, we're not going to put up with it and we're gonna enforce it, and it is what it is.
I know your guys and girls are working very hard to do that, and I appreciate all your help. It's just that, it's just getting crazy and we'll just do the best we can, but I appreciate your work. Thank you.
Yes, sir. We'll keep at it.
Randy, I just have a couple things for you. Just, just people are saying about the recycling, they hit and miss. What's up with the gates being open and closed? I mean, I know that now that we're gonna be getting some other help down there, maybe we can adjust our schedule and make sure that it's open for that.
Yeah, sure. We, it's been a few growing pains. It's the first time we, we monitored that area. We used to leave it open. Five or six days a week, and it really turned into a disaster. And so we now have a monitor there before we open the gate. And we, we thought we could have longer hours. I'm talking with Councilman Williams. We tightened the hours to be consistent. We now are going to be open from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And we can get a 912 worker there during the week for that, and then, and also. From 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Saturday. So we will have a 912 worker there. We've been able, the, the problems we've had is when somebody called in sick or something on the day, then it kinda messes up the schedule that Mr. Poppy and I have, and we have to scramble. And I'd like to thank the other divisions for helping us scramble and get somebody there. We don't feel we can leave the gate open and monitor where it's gonna be another disaster. So we apologize. I take, I take the blame for not being able to get people there sometimes at nine o'clock. It's taking a little bit of moving around. If they're fixing a pump or something like that, I let them fix the pump. And a few minutes late. We're gonna correct that. We have a plan to do that. I've worked with the mayor to make a plan to do that. It will be 912 people. And we will keep that gate monitored, and we will have a consistent time. And I apologize for taking some time to learn how to work that bet. It's a new system. Part of it is the short staffing that we're experiencing with the, with the situation we're going through. We've added some people, really moved them around. Who, we doubled the number of employees, the 912 employees in parks overnight. We, we went from two to four. And I think it's, even though we get a few complaints, I think those two people did a great job for a while. And the four people are doing, I mentioned Jim Ganey was just added, and then Steve Zatorski's been added. And he's, he's a lawn mowing machine, and he was really doing great today. And the other two guys are Jason Sislemic and Billy Russ, and they're just, we have an excellent parks division. And we expect to grow it, and Rich and the mayor are working on the supervisory part of it.
Yeah, I totally agree with you, with the, with the guys, great guys.
Parks will work. Yep. And so, yeah, thanks.
Yeah, thanks, Randy. I appreciate, like I said, I totally agree with you on that. Hey, the other thing I wanna ask you, just one more other thing is that I remember you, you and I were talking about the miles per hour sign that we have shared services that, that we're part owners with. Is there any way we can get that in the city of Dunkirk, that digital readout shows how fast people are moving up and down roads? And we put those like, you know, Main and Grant, Central Avenue, you know, some of the other, some of the other places that are, are, are a problem, some?
Absolutely. I, it's stored in the Sheridan garage. Supervisor John Walker is kinda keeping an eye on it. He knows how to program it. I would like to talk to the chief and the, and the mayor and the public safety committee, and we can position that thing around. It looks exactly like the signs in the school zones in Westfield, but it's portable.
Yeah, right, yeah.
There's a radar in there. It tells you what you're doing wrong. You're going 28 and 25, you know, stop it. And so we, I, great idea. We'll get, we'll get, we'll get it in place.
Yeah, that's a great idea. I'm glad you mentioned that because it's, yeah, that's a really good comparison is the one in Westfield. I go through it quite a bit, and it always grabs your attention, which is always good. Thanks, Randy. I appreciate it. That's all I got for you. Glenn, I do have a couple of things, you know, for you tonight. Also. I, I spoke to a person on 69 West Green Street. They're, they're cleaning up at the dead end street on West Green, Mr. Schuler and his brother. I guess that you were over there. I wanna say they had a couple dumpsters out there. They're cleaning the, the property up. Do you know, are you aware of that? Glenn?
I believed that it was Alan that was out.
Okay, I'm sorry. He said it was you, so that's the only reason I'm just, I was asking about that. I just wanted, I drove by and they're doing, you know, they're cleaning everything up, and Alan was asking them questions about it, but. They're trying to do the best they can. I mean, it looks like it's like night and day right now. He did send me pictures, so I'll send those pictures to you if I could, email those to you. All right.
If I could ask, is that the property at the dead end of the street?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, yeah, I actually spoke to him last week, and we had a good conversation.
Okay, everything.
Very good job there.
I'm sorry, I didn't see, I, I, I'm sorry, I didn't see you there. So everything's good there now?
Well, yeah, obviously there was, you know, quite a bit of vehicles in the yard and debris, and we did talk to them initially, and then I was over there doing a follow up. And I, that was the first time I talked to him in person. And we had a good conversation, and they're, they're doing a really good job to head in the right direction and getting that cleaned up.
Awesome. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. You called me with some concerns that you were over there, and I said, well, I said I have a council meeting tomorrow, so I would just ask you on that. I appreciate it.
I was out in the street.
What's that?
I was out in the street, just following up to see what I could see from the street.
Oh, okay. All right, excellent. Thank you. Just to follow up on the addresses I gave you on Central, Glenn, 821, 812, 801, and 831 with the paint.
Yes. You want reports on each individual address?
Yeah, if you could just let me know how you did. If you can just put it in my mailbox, I was just wondering if you need me to.
All, all three received violation letters. Some were severe and lengthy than others.
Okay, awesome. So that was, that was taken care of, they did receive them.
Yes.
Excellent. There is, there's one issue I wanna speak to. I'll give you a call tomorrow, and I just, there's a couple of things I wanna go over. About the, about one of the residents that didn't show up for the inspection, so.
I beg your pardon?
The one on the inspection that never showed, I believe.
What address?
That'd be 821 Central.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll clear that up.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate it. I'll get ahold of you and go over that tomorrow. Just, is Mike Edwards, Chief Edwards on? No? Okay. Just another thing I'd like to say, just to follow up what Marty said Saturday. I helped out with the, the Food Bank of Western New York over at Dunkirk High School. You know, Dave D'Amico put on a great effort and got everyone together, legislators, the senators. Council people were there, the Dunkirk Teachers Association. A lot of people from the, from the community came and gave, and I know it's tough times for everybody, and just to see people come there and help out. And, and give, give what they could is, was fantastic, and it was, it was a pleasure helping them people out.
Councilman?
Yeah.
I'm on. Do you have a question for me? It's Mike.
Oh, yeah, Mike, I was just gonna, I got your report. I wanna say it was a fantastic report, and my mind blown was from the emergency responses. You guys get that is like almost 90% of your calls are EMS calls.
Yeah, that's correct. We've actually. Over the last few months, those calls decreased during the COVID-19 crisis. But over the last three or four weeks, we've been real busy and call volume has increased. We had a night last week where we had a variety of calls where it answered five EMS calls, a couple of fire alarm activations. We had a structured fire, had residents full of natural gas, so, you know, hats off to our crews that were on that night. Kinda got a bunch of curveballs thrown at them, and as usual, they did a great job. Thanks for that.
Yeah, yeah, that was, yeah, thanks, Mike. You know, you know, again, you know, give your guys, you know, you know, thank you from the city council. You know, you guys do a fantastic job. Really appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, just one other thing, and I'll end, I'll end the arguing tonight, and we'll move on. But I just wanna say that this council's trying to do as best as can, and, and we're, we're making moves, and we're, we're making moves that are not gonna be popular, and I said that in January 1st. We had to, we had to fire some people, and there's more people we need to fire. We need to take the trash to the curb, and that's exactly what we're doing, whether you like it or you don't. All right, moving on. Let's go. 72, over, go to unfinished business? Yeah. Seeing none, go to prefiled resolutions, number 72.
Alan? This is Councilman Doyle. Are you gonna be available for a little ride tomorrow? You're muted, buddy.
Yes, yes.
All right, all right. What time would you be at City Hall?
Anytime, call us. I just have a scheduled engagement during lunchtime. Other than that, I'm free.
All right, how about around nine o'clock?
Can we make it 9:15? I have an inspection.
We can make it nine thirty if you want.
Yeah, nine thirty would be better.
Okay.
Yep.
And then I want to thank, uh, Roger Hayden for the wonderful job he's doing. And I know he's under a lot of pressure. This guy's been around. He's been, uh, he's, he's been around. He knows his business. Roger, thank you very much. And Tommy Malatsko. Follow my advice, buddy. For your retirement and do what I told you. You've been an asset to the city. Thank you very much. Rebecca, thank you for answering my questions when I ask.
Paul, I just would like to say one thing. On the wonderful, uh, reports we're getting from Denise Santos, uh, Animal Control. She's doing a superb job.
Yeah, I, that is, that's another thing. That's, it's a, that's a very, very good point. I meant to mention that also. She is doing a wonderful job in the reports and showing us accountability, which is huge for this council, which we need.
Yes.
And, uh, it's, she's one of many of department heads that do that. So it's, 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 uh, it's appreciated. Thanks. All right, um, we're going to move on to prefile resolutions. Number seventy-two.
Resolution authorizing contract with New York State DEC for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty environmental restoration program funding.
Any discussion, council? Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Vermonto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Vandenvouver?
Aye, Carrie, number seventy-three.
Resolution accepting electrical contract for Main Street Third Ward Pump Station repairs and upgrades under the two thousand nine consent order.
Any discussion, council? Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Vermonto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmembers Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Vandenvouver?
Aye, Carrie, number seventy-four.
Resolution authorizing conveyance of New York City-owned vacant lot and paper street parcels to adjoining residents.
Any, any discuss, discussion, council? Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Vermonto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Vandenvouver?
Aye, Carrie, seventy-five.
Resolution for intro number six to local law number six, twenty twenty, city of Dunkirk, a local law to amend city code. Chapter fifty-six, section twenty-fifth, twenty forty, twenty sixty, thirty-ten and thirty-thirty.
Any discussion, council?
Need this for public hearing?
Table for public hearing, that's correct.
We need a motion to table.
So move. Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Vermonto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Vandenvouver?
Aye, we'll, we'll.
Chairman, would you like to schedule that?
Yeah, right. I'd like to schedule that. Uh, how about Tuesday, July seventh at five twenty PM? Works. Is that good, Richard?
Yep.
Okay.
I have a walk-in. This is uh, from the Juneteenth Organization. It says, dear city officials, the Juneteenth twenty twenty Celebration Committee is requesting to use the Memorial Park, Lake Shore Drive West, Dunkirk, New York, to hold a rally on Friday, February, I'm sorry, June nineteenth, twenty twenty, beginning at six PM. June nineteenth is the official observance of the African-American Emancipation Day, which began in eighteen sixty-five. There will be presentations from various speakers on the importance of Juneteenth, especially in light of everything going on in the world today. We will expect that the rally should last no longer than two hours. Community members will be encouraged to wear masks and participate. I'm sorry, practice social distancing in light of COVID- nineteen. The Juneteenth Celebration Committee will have masks available for everyone that does not have one. Look forward to hearing from you at your earliest convenience. Loretta, Slade and Terrain.
Any discussion, council?
Uh, just, just that, um, like I said at the workshop, uh, they usually do their weekend-long, uh, Juneteenth celebration. And that's usually at Memorial Park, so, uh, I, I'd love to make the first to, uh, be the first to, to say that, um, make the motion, sorry, to, um, to say that we, uh, approve this and, uh, put it to the other, all the other department heads and committees. As long as they sign off on it, then we'd be okay. And I understand that the reason why they'd be doing this now is because of, you know, they canceled their original one and then now that things are opening, that, that now they're, uh, they're going to be doing a one-day, two-hour little rally, um, which, which is good. So I, I definitely support it and, and like I said, I'd, I'd like to be the one to make the motion to move this forward.
Okay, um, you know, like I said in the workshop also, that I understand it's a COVID- nineteen and, uh, you know, the, uh, the memo came out today and we got to make a decision by Friday on this. I'm not saying that I would vote no on it anyways, but we need to get back to where we're, we're going to tell people. As of today, I think we should start as of tonight after this, uh, this meeting, that, uh, we go back to the thirty days. We need to have more notice on what's going on around, uh, the city of Dunkirk, to be fairness to the department heads and, and be fairness to the council. So, um, any other discussion, council?
I'll second that, Paul.
Okay. That'd be, uh, Williams and Vermonto? Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Vermonto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Wake up, Tidge.
Stoyl?
Stoyl?
Is he there?
He's there.
Tidge?
Yeah.
You gotta say aye.
Member Stoyl?
Say aye.
I don't have to say anything. Go ahead, aye. Just remember, everything goes forward from this point on.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Vandenvouver?
Aye, Carrie. New business?
Seeing none, I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
By Williams, seconded by Nichols. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Vermonto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Vandenvouver?
Aye, Carrie. Meeting is adjourned. Have a good night, everybody. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, George.